Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our special city council meeting on May the 10th, 2022. Calling to order the special city council meeting timestamp is 6:24. And we apologize to our citizens present for our technical delays. Thank you for bearing with us. In accordance with the, an order of the Office of the Governor, March 16th, 2020, is extended the city council of the city of Duncanville, Texas will conduct city council special meetings in person at 6:00 PM one Tuesday, May 10th, 2022, in order to advance public health goal of limiting face-to-face meetings, also called social distancing in an effort to slow the spread. Sorry. To slow the spread of coronavirus. This is an open meeting conducted in person. Okay? Okay, pursue it. That's me. Okay. Ah, okay. Got a haircut and everything? Okay. Citizen comments and reports during election season, March 1st to May 7th, and during a runoff election period not broadcast or recorded. City secretary, do we have any? Whoa. Look over. Do we have any citizen comments? Okay. I see none, neither written nor submitted earlier. Okay. So moving on to item number three on our agenda. Presentations, receiver presentation McConnell and Jones, LLP, on the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ended September 30, 2021, including the independent auditor's report.
...of the financials are in accordance with U.S. GAAP and has been prepared with all the supplementary information that there is, that we've used the appropriate accounting policies. We also established and maintain effective internal controls. We comply with all the laws and the contracts and grant agreements. The financial statements are correct and the material statements. And we've written representations. They all, we have signed the letter, management signed the letter saying basically, we agree that we have given them all the information that is at our disposal that we know to the best of our knowledge. So that's really what that, what that means. Next slide. And so the auditor's report, which they, they did give us an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. It means that everything is in accordance with GAAP. There were no findings. That we understand all the internal controls that are relevant to auditing have been identified and that we are working on those orders are in place. The required supplementary information is there and all of the statements and schedules are there in their audit report. Yes, sir?
Will we eventually get a copy of their report?
Yes. The audit report, it should be included in your financial statements that were included. Yes, it's a, it's probably a two-page letter that says from the firm McConnell Jones. If it's not, um.
It's yours?
See, check the table of contents.
I don't, I don't think the audit just letters is in there. I think this.
Okay, and that was what I got.
Okay.
I'm sending y'all everything right now. If that's what you sent me. Okay.
Yes.
Should I go make copies of this? Well, those who have.
This was sent out, I believe, last, last week?
It wasn't in there.
It wasn't, it wasn't.
Okay. They, they sent out a draft, they sent out a draft today that should have included the opinion.
I will print that for everybody right now. Like this one? Is that the one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm fine. I just, I just remember the note if we're gonna get it.
Yes.
As long as we know it's coming, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yes, sir. It is.
It's in your email right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We're, uh, may I correct what I'm wrong with? We're gonna accept or reject this report today, right?
That's, that's.
All right, so number four.
Oh, okay. We haven't, we haven't seen it. So that, that kind of complicates things for me to accept or reject if we haven't seen it.
The report that you have in front of you is the, is basically the report. The only thing that you're missing is the auditor's letter that says that this is a modified, clean opinion. Um, this presentation is from the auditors. So they are basically agreeing and have committed to that this is a clean, unmodified opinion, uh, financial report. And if you wanted, the finance and audit committee met with them earlier today and went over in details, uh, all of the financials. They had this presentation as well as they asked them several questions and, uh, they grilled us pretty good. So they agreed to, that when we get to this meeting, that they were willing to present, that we are ready to accept it.
But they're not here.
The auditors?
No, the, uh, anybody, you're talking about the audit committee?
Audit and finance. You do have two members of the finance and audit committee there, right?
Three.
Got three.
Three.
Three, I'm sorry. Three members, I'm sorry.
What was I thinking? Okay, so, um, I, I hate to take up time because we got way behind because of technical errors, but.
Okay. We had a, we had a meeting at, at two o'clock. Uh, we were all present. Um, and we had a, a, at times, very spirited discussion. Uh, I mentioned about, uh, what's driving all of this is the fact that Duncanville has traditionally received a GFOA excellence in financial reporting. And basically that, the way that it works is that, uh, the report is supposed to be turned in six months after the close of the fiscal year, which would make it March, January 1st. This report has not been submitted on time. It hasn't gone to GFOA yet. So a lot of, a lot of the discussion that we had as an audit and finance committee related to trying to understand what happened, uh, trying to understand why it happened and to, uh, state our intention as a body to staff that we need to receive from them, uh, a response, uh, that would indicate, that would position us, uh, moving forward to be on time with the report. And so my understanding of what happened is that, uh, as I think you all know, we have had transition on the finance staff. And a result was a lot of knowledge walked out the door. And when that knowledge walked out the door, that knowledge walked out the door. And so, uh, there was no, there were few, if any, uh, written procedures left for the people that were there so that they could pick up where the people that left, left off. That is not an unusual circumstance to happen to cities. When I left Seagoville, um, I took a lot of knowledge out of the door with me and they had to make some changes in the way that they do things in order to keep it going. As a matter of fact, one of the things they did was just to keep me on as a consultant. Uh, but anyway, I digress. So, uh, a lot of, a lot of knowledge walked out the door and we see it now. We see it. This is what happened. And, and the people that were remaining did a portion of the work. This is very complicated. This is what I've done, uh, most of my career and it's very complicated. And it's not something that can just be picked up and done. You just can't do it. You have to be trained. You have to be experienced. So we, we staff was, was trying to cope with this situation. Uh, and, uh, that's why the report is late now. Uh, moving forward, uh, staff has indicated to us, uh, that they're going to invest in training for the holdover staff that is left. They're going to invest in training in there. Uh, they're also, uh, going to work very closely with the auditors on a weekly basis, uh, so that everyone can be on the same page in terms of how the audit is progressing.
Let me just interrupt right there to ask a question in fairness to our, our staff and our city manager. Is it also fair to say on that point that there's a point where the new people involved with these auditors have to learn the strengths and weaknesses of the auditors? Because if they're not doing something in a timely manner, they have to learn that maybe they need to put more pressure on them to get things done in a more timely manner? Was some of that going on too?
Uh, yeah, there was a whole learning situation going on.
Enough said, because that's what, that's what I thought. So in fairness to y'all, that, that's, that's a learning process to find out what they're good at and maybe what they're not so good at.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then that knife cuts both ways because you have auditors coming in who are used to working with certain people and a certain way of doing things.
Sure.
It wasn't there.
Sure. Okay.
We had different system. And they were used to stuff looking a different way from old system. We've transitioned over to a new system. And so at some point, we have to start using our new system like it's supposed to be used. And so that's where we're going now. And so these auditors were kind of slow in transitioning to that point.
To the MUNIS system.
To MUNIS. Which is our new software that we've invested a lot of funds in. And so our goal is to use as many features as possible so that we, because we are so small, we can't afford to add people. The best guide for us is to get all of the modules in MUNIS up and running and as, and efficient as possible. So that's what we're working on now.
Yeah, and I think it's really important to have this kind of a discussion and I won't belabor this, um, so that the public can hear it too and they can have a better understanding because they're hearing about the delays and, and they know we've been put off a couple of times. And to bring that to the surface so the public can understand it, I appreciate all your comments.
And let me say this just to close. So, you know, staff has committed, uh, to change things and do better. The auditors have, are gonna change and do things differently and better. And, and we as a finance committee, traditionally we've met twice a year. And so we are going to start meeting four times a year, every quarter, so that we can provide the necessary oversight on you all's behalf to make sure that everything is done decently in and on.
Good, thank you.
If, if I may, Mr. Contreras, one other thing. I had the opportunity to listen in on the, the entire audit or finance committee meeting this afternoon. And this Atmore very clearly and explicitly explained some of the disconnects that happened with the software system between the manual operation, the manual general ledger, and having to put things in MUNIS and stuff like left-hand, right-hand, left-hand manual, right-hand MUNIS. And there were some issues with that. She very clearly explained it. It's, it was a steep learning curve and that with the transition process in terms of losing people, gaining people, the training and education, in terms of learning how to go from the manual into the MUNIS, it caused some issues. But those issues are recognized and being overcome. And I think that's, that's the strength of what's happening right now.
Great. Thank you.
A question about.
Yes, sir.
This question might be for Patrick or Mark or Joe. Where, you know, there's no significant, or no findings were noted. And I was in on the first meeting that Joe had before this one. And there were some significant findings. So what changed between that meeting and that report and what we see now?
Can I answer that for you, ma'am?
Yes.
Yes, you can. They gave us a list and so we saw that document and said, and I asked him to send me examples. And every example he had was not correct. And we had technical proof to document where staff had actually done the work. It was once again a disconnect and it, we had this discussion, I think, and this whole thing starts where our first conversation. And we say the first, Tia was everything audit. And she, we realized we lost, we knew we were losing someone wonderful in Tia, but they had a communication mechanism. At the same time, this city has implemented a MUNIS system rather quickly. We didn't implement all of it, but we implemented components of it. And so as we talk about how we were managing a MUNIS system, but we also had that wonderful spreadsheet that we were using. And so when those numbers come together and you have a traditional form where Tia, and I, I spent some time on the phone with Tia. She knew what they needed. She knew what it needed to look like and she knew how to merge those two data points together and give them what they want. We moved back and said to them, this is your system. This is where the data has to come from. And it didn't look the same. And so there were a couple of communication gaps because basically we did all the work for them in the past. And now they were forced to do a lot more than they're used to having to do. And so as we move forward through that management list, we then have an opportunity to respond. Upon receipt of our response with including line-by-line documentation and walking through the system, we discovered that there was a communication gap. And at the end of the day, working with that company and their partners, we identified that there was a communication gap and their information was not as straightforward as they thought it was.
And so that's why I said a few seconds ago that knife cuts both ways. We had to learn how to work with them. They had to learn how to work with us. And so it was getting to know you on both sides.
I, I think one of the other handicaps to talk about is that they were never on site as well, nor would they at least come on site and be able to communicate properly to, to staff. And you know, the COVID was not to be, died to be on site. And I just think auditors need to be on site at some point to hear proper communication. So that was a, that was a handicap to the late, so.
Yeah, Mr. Coons, I, I've dealt with auditors for decades. And the purpose of an audit is to discover what's going on and to find out if there are problems, to correct the problem. And so that was what was first identified and that's where it gave us, gave staff the opportunity to accept. Thank you for giving us that information. Here's what we see on our side. And I will note, I mean, those guys right there, me dealing in commercial and business accounting for many, many years, my just being a recipient of audit reports and having to deal with what you're doing, knowing that you do not get an auditor to just, what shall I say, arbitrarily change their opinion. They stick to it. I mean, they have a governmental responsibility. They can lose their license to do what they're doing if they don't do their job correctly. That's why this audit responsibility paragraph is very important. So for, for McConnell and Jones to come back with a clean report, which is what this audit opinion says. You're exactly correct. When it was first discovered, they came to us, those items were refuted, those items were explained and they corrected them to the satisfaction of McConnell Jones. If those items weren't corrected to the satisfaction of McConnell Jones, this paragraph right here would be citing material findings. And it is not. So that evidences the discussions that go on between staff and auditors in terms of correcting those issues. And to the credit of, uh, our city manager and our director of finances, finding those issues and saying, yeah, we got them. Now here's what we have on our side. They have, McConnell Jones cannot just arbitrarily say, okay, cool. They have to on their side validate all of the inputs in order to come out with a clean report, which is what we have.
And they should have connected with me earlier. Way before the letter came out and the audit. And, um, and that was not the case. That is not normal. Um, in every audit in every city I've been in, the auditors have always gotten with, um, the city, the, the director and the manager and talked about what went on in the audit and we have a discussion because there are two sides of the table. There's always two sides. And so, yeah, we, we didn't have, we did not get a chance to have that discussion that we should have had before it came to the finance and audit committee.
It was new technology platform. So a lot of their documents, and so when you're doing, I hate sitting while I talk to you guys. When you're doing, when someone's on site, you're printing, you're giving them data. With this world of automation, you're uploading, kind of like today. You guys received this upload. Some could open it, some couldn't. Some saw it, some didn't. That's the same thing that was happening with them. We're uploading documents and uploading it, a new system of how you communicate. And both of us are adjusting to that new system of, well, we uploaded it, you didn't get it? Oh, yeah, we, and we upload it again. And so that was kind of the back and forth and that's where some of those conversations came from.
So this is just, just for my education. So is there, is there a standard process that has to be followed?
In, in auditing, during external audit? Yeah, there is a process that's pretty standard in the industry. Um, before the audit, finance and audit committee and it even gets a report or the draft from the auditors, they usually have a sit-down meeting with staff and management about the audit before it even gets there. This did not take place because they had promised us a document. They had promised that they were finished. They will say it will be next week. So we kept getting delays and delays and we had already set a meeting. So we thought, okay, um, if no communication, we guess everything's okay. And that did not come out, um, like it, like it came out. So we didn't expect it. So when y'all heard it, that was the first time we heard. And so it was, that is not normal. That is not the way it is supposed to go. And go on, on.
And that's part of management's responsibilities. They exercise, correct, saying, we are not messing with you guys anymore. You know, you're supposed to give us a report. You didn't do it. That's management's responsibility. So when they stood up and said, we're not buying this. We're not gonna have a council meeting until you provide us with the report. That's why we had to delay our council meetings until they got their act together. So they were really not performing as well as they should have and they got caught, right? By our staff.
So with that, at some point in the future, this council will have to look at that auditing program.
Exactly.
And do a findings report.
And there you go.
And, and that, that becomes a council issue for finding a new auditing firm.
Okay.
Yep, exactly. So don't ever forget what you just said.
And so here we get control points and I'm noted and this is part of the auditor. Next slide. Um, and this is just the, the auditor saying we encountered no difficulties in dealing with management. Uh, and they were pleased to report there are no disagreements, which is normal for them to communicate and, uh, just appreciating the staff and financial team for our assistance through the audit process. And I know that really in, in government, I will just tell you that I've done both the governmental accounting and financial accounting, um, both boards, Government Accounting Standards Board and the Financial Accounting Standards Board. And I can tell you, going from a corporate America financial statement of biggest ones by 12, maybe 20 pages, to a governmental accounting report of 100-plus pages is a big difference. And so, um, my patience with this team is, is there because I understand from firsthand me learning it, uh, years ago, how to do it from scratch, that it takes a while to get it. So you have to have patience with this team because it is gonna take training and time with them in order to get this process. It is not easy. It is worse than corporate America because they don't have all the requirements put upon a municipality that, um, to do the financial statement. So I applaud the team, but also I know it's a lot of work and we are ready to do it. They have already started. Uh, they are looking forward to learning more and more and we'll get there. With that, that's all, that is the auditor's presentation. Any questions?
I'll just make one comment for the general public's information as well. That an annual audit, in my personal opinion, is the most important document produced for any organization, whether it be government, municipality, federal, public, private. Because what it evidences is the control of fiduciary responsibility and the control of those monies. If there's any problem with that control, that fiduciary responsibility, you go to jail. That's when the, you know, the SEC can come in and they can do an investigation on a, on a public company. And that's when individuals end up losing lots of stuff, ending some time in jail. And these audit reports, as I said in my experience in decades dealing with on both sides of these things, this tells you whether you have confidence in how those monies are being handled, regardless of where those revenues are generated, how those revenues are expended. This gives you the confidence that things are being done correctly or incorrectly. And I've been on the backside of an audit report with material findings. And I'll tell you, it is not fun because those material findings become public knowledge. And basically those auditors tell you, you have X number of days to correct these deficiencies or that organization becomes a default breach of certain standards. There's the FASB's and the GASB's. You know? So the, an audit report coming to us with this auditor's letter saying that we have a clean report is extremely important. And I'll digress for one minute. There, there's on page, small letters III, in, in the report. It's on, well, that's what it is. It's page III. It says, "Sound fiscal management is being exercised by the staff of the city of Duncanville." And that one small little phrase, "sound fiscal management," is the key to understand. Yeah, do we have problems? Yeah, we got problems. Are we perfect? Never. We're never perfect because we're dealing with human beings. And those human beings are dealing with the computer system on the other side as well. But what it says is that we have sound fiscal management with no material findings and we have a clean operation. And that word clean is an accounting term. No, I mean, it's an accounting term. Uh, a, a clean audit report has an immense amount of import or, what should I say, importance attached to it. Just wanted to interject that as well for, for the public's knowledge. So that takes care of Mr. Martin Williams. All right. That moves on to item number four, which is a motion to accept a comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2021, including the independent auditor's report from McConnell and Jones, LLP. Now, Mr. Coons, you brought up an extremely good point and I think we need to address that. It has merit. The fact that we have just now received the auditor's report, which is, would be included on pages I, two, or get one, two, and three in the report. We now have in hand what that would contain. So what I would like to do, if, if necessary, take a moment to read this, comprehend it, and accept it for what it is. As I said, it is a clean report. So that the draft that we have with the blanks, this now becomes part of it that we have in hand and we're able to move forward and not have this as a part of anything stopping us. That would be my recommendation and suggestion to council. So, and Mr. Fincher, you were right in bringing that up. Have you had an opportunity to read this?
Starts at the opinion.
I read it while you were talking.
Okay, so. Well, shows how much importance I have when I talk. And that's fine. Appreciate your candidness.
No, he was multitasking.
There are multiple scientific studies that the human brain cannot multitask. It is purely a marketing tactic. Anyway.
Some I would like, yes, please, to get some clarification on this for just to be sure. Uh, the difference between accepting this and approving it is the difference.
Well, basically, it's kind of hard for you to approve, uh, a financial report that's done by external auditors who we pay to come in and give us their unbiased opinion on where we are. So basically, we're just saying, we accept, um, your opinion, which is a clean audit opinion. Uh, approving it is, is just really not relevant at this point because you didn't have any say in whether the numbers went on that page. So that.
And I will, excuse me, you know, and I, I will say, in my career, that's always what I did as a staff person is to present it for council's acceptance.
So on the other aspect of it, from what I understand, the, the term acceptance means we're accepting the fact that both management and the auditors performed in accordance with their responsibilities, which are outlined in the auditor's letter. That's what we're accepting. Yes?
Oh, just to help me clarify what, what value do these types of statements have? And it's repeated several times in different areas. But it says, "In our opinion, the combining of individual non-major fund financial statements are fairly stated in all respects." Oh, I'm on the wrong line, sorry. Okay, the next line down, um, right above the other reporting required by government auditing standards. The introductory and statistical sections have been subjected to. The introductory statistical sections have been subjected to the audit, have not been subjected to auditing procedures applied in the audit of the basic financial statements. And accordingly, we do not express an opinion or provide any assurance on that.
That's because of it. Any of the information you find in the statistical era arena is not basically audited. They in in fact, they didn't go in and look at and make sure, like, any of the demographics or the, you know, the taxpayers, if that's all that's correct. No, they did not audit that. That that's so they do that in the letter to make sure that if somebody finds an error in that section, you don't come back and blame the auditors.
It's prepared by staff.
It's prepared by staff. That information is prepared by them.
And the statistical portions are the stuff at the very end?
Yes.
Pages one oh three, one ten, one eleven, one twelve, where it talks about, here's the here are the the uh the taxable properties in the city. Here's our employment rate of eight point one, or unemployment rate of eight point one percent. That's the statistical stuff that is just given and not not audited because it's not in accounting practice.
They're just distancing themselves from any decision.
Right.
Okay.
And it says it before that paragraph, but it gets to it. It says unaudited, so you don't think, if you come back and say that you have fifteen employers and they, and our document says fourteen, that they don't take responsibility for stuff that they didn't review.
Right.
So um.
I mean, a motion.
Wait, what? I it's it's, you know, are there any comments or questions about the report itself? I I have some. I and there have been, I had these comments and questions have been presented to staff beforehand, so I'm not catching them cold. But one thing I want to do is recognize the fact that um by our rules of procedure, we cannot exceed ten minutes each in terms of talking. We can come back and talk for another ten minutes. So I've got some questions, and if if my questions exceed ten minutes, stop me. Make a, Mr. Harvey is always good at making point of order, and he can stop me at that ten minute mark. Yeah, time it, time it.
I got my timer.
Yeah. So um, you know, I, so the first question I had was on page six of the financial highlights. It talks about, it says fifteen point two million dollars is unassigned and available for spending. This this appears to be a very large bucket that maybe we, if we'd have known it, and maybe Munis would have worked it, and you have seen it in, you know, earlier. Could we have spent that fifteen million dollars on other things because it says it's unassigned?
Yes, it means that it's not designated for something or restricted. But if you were looking in the February uh financial report, uh you'll see in the report, you see this every month. Is that at the end of the general fund, um, beginning fund balance, if you look at that number, that fund balance number is fifteen point three. That's my unaudited number when I'm estimating that you're gonna, that you ended twenty one with and you began twenty two with. And so I was pretty close. It says fifteen point um three two, six two, and I think that was fifteen. So you note that bucket every month. I report that as the beginning fund balance. That's the amount you came into the year with already that is not assigned, that is not restricted.
I think what copy in in their language was it says unassigned and spendable.
Yes.
And in your reports to us, I didn't ever hear that kind of language. It was just like, here's this bucket of fifteen million dollars, but you never said, well, go ahead and spend it, counsel.
Well, what.
It's unassigned.
In beginning fund balance for me, when I look at fund balance, when I report fund, I I do it as anything that's not restricted. I do a formula to make sure that Munis has the same number, gets the balance between assets minus liabilities. So after I pay all my liabilities, this is the amount that's left for me to spend. And so that's what I put in my reports as your fund balance. That is the amount you have that's unrestricted.
Got it.
Okay?
Yeah. Pages thirty three and thirty four. Uh, on the PDF, it's pages fifty one and fifty two. Pages thirty three and thirty four, it cites new accounting standards and pronouncements, and it gives the GAZB statement and the adoption required. Looking at the dates that those adoptions were required, we missed three of them.
No, we missed none of them.
It says we missed three of them.
No, it says subsequent. Subsequent to nine thirty twenty one is when we were required to have those statements in place, have those statements applied to our financials.
The fiscal year beginning October first.
Yes, twenty twenty two.
Okay, but here's where it copies, says the city has not yet adopted these required standards subsequent to September thirty twenty one.
Right, because you do have the option to do early adoption of any of those. Yes.
Right there.
It does. It does say it does not, we haven't adopted it, it's not required. Normally, a city adopts it when they're required to. So this is the fiscal year that when they audit this in September twenty two is when those statements will apply to our, if we have any of those, like, for instance, fiduciary activities. We, if we don't have any fiduciary activities, then we don't necessarily have to apply those standards because we don't have any.
It's the three that I picked up on of the twenty twenty one.
Yes, the twenty twenty one is because we're not really required for those. And you have to also make.
It don't apply to us, is what you're saying?
Yes.
That's a difference. So they don't apply to us.
They don't apply to us.
This is where McConnell Jones ought to be shot, saying that this, we didn't do this, we didn't have to.
Well, that's a standard language. Standard language.
Okay.
You have to read the subsequent, okay, to September.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, got it. Page seventy in the audit report. No, I'm sorry, page fifty one, which would be page seventy in the PDF. Page fifty one. Yeah, the actual.
Actuarial.
Yeah. Why did they say the actual valuation dated December thirty first, twenty twenty, the discount rate December thirty first, twenty twenty? How come they didn't use twenty twenty one?
If you say December twenty twenty, what are you doing a full fiscal year? Our statements are as of September thirty of two thousand twenty one.
But they're, okay, so they're.
So the actuaries.
Calendar year versus our fiscal year.
It is.
Which confuses things. Confuse me.
Yes, but the actuaries do their, because they look at employment on an annual basis, a calendar year and not a fiscal year. All employment data and pays are done through the IRS.
Like our taxes.
Yes.
Counts only for the year.
Okay. So it's always going to be behind because that's when the actuaries come in and they do their report as of that date before that fiscal year. They can't do twenty one because the year is not complete.
Okay, so that's an education for me.
Yes.
Because I was looking at twenty twenty, I'm going like they're a year behind. They have data, they could have used it, but they didn't. That's what I was looking.
They're up to date.
Okay. Last item is uh page sixty two. And looking at the city manager salaries and benefits of five hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. Knowing city manager's salary, it seems that that five hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred and seven dollars has got to include something more than just the city manager's salary benefits.
Yes.
It's down. It's actually down. So what it would have normally included, because generally it's budgeted at much more, and previously in that fiscal year, the city secretary and the city manager were merged into one organization. So you had the city secretary's employees, the city manager, the assistant city manager. You also had the transition of the new assistant coming in and the payout that was assigned just to the assistant's family when our assistant left. So the salaries were a little bit more inclusive for that fiscal year.
Okay, okay. One one last comment I have. And this came out of the the finance committee briefing today by Mr. Williams. That I, it's not in the audit report. I didn't see it anywhere. But he made the statement that we used to have seven people in accounting, and now we have three. In his opinion, the fewer number of people in accounting could contribute to internal control possibilities because we don't have enough people for segregation of duties, which I've always known. Segregation of duties is essential in accounting practices. So he made that statement. I don't know whether it's accurate or not because it's not contained anywhere in the audit report. Do you have any comment about that?
It's accurate and not accurate. Um, the most you had in seventeen eighteen, there were six employees uh in finance administration. That was the director, assistant director, uh two accountants, and two account clerks. Uh, in eighteen nineteen, they added a budget analyst to the position, which got you to seven total employees there. Uh, and that seven continued. On last year in the fiscal year, the budget person, which was Jennifer, has been moved on to my budget for city management. And we did not fill the assistant director position last year in lieu of we actually funded a second procurement person. Now, that is not to say that this year we are not proposing that we do need to have a middle level person in the accounting function. So what we are is we are down one accountant type position.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That's all the questions, comments.
When did you see that, Beth Field?
Well, she and I have been having discussions about the job description, what it looks like. Now, from the city manager's standpoint, I don't see another, I don't see it as an assistant director, but maybe it is uh with a little bit more responsibility, not just doing audit. It will have to have a little bit more of the previous salary. And so we're looking over job description. It is a proposal in our next year's budget. As we look at where we are here to date, um, we may come back and say that we are in a a shape where we can at least start the recruitment because those are hard positions to find. And so uh finding folks who have the accounting background and and some of the budget stuff that we're looking for are not easy. And so we are probably going to want to start early if we have an indication that it's something that you all are comfortable. But we do recommend and see that there, what we inherited that we're saying is we had basically a senior accountant and an accountant. And I think you all remember the discussion as we had the conversation. Senior, we really have more, two accountants who are learning. And we had Tia, who was the senior accountant managing. When we lost Tia's role, that oversight and that training necessary for the our newer people who are coming in, we lost. We also, Lauren took a job someplace else who was accountant, and we promoted up within Raina into an account position. So we are training on the job. And so as much as I think it would be great to say that Adina can can do all things for everything, if, as you start to look deep inside, we recognize we're growing our own, which is a good thing. But we are going to need someone to kind of make sure that we're paying attention, paying attention day to day because they're smart, they're ambitious, they're hardworking, they just don't have the time and place and understanding of everything at this time.
So so you said, right, is she an accountant this way?
She's an accountant now. She was promoted to an accountant, we hired a new accountant.
No, she was promoted to accountant, but is she an, is she an accountant herself?
Does she have a accounting decree here? Is that what you're asking?
No, she doesn't. She hasn't.
No one has a degree.
So she, so so they're they're on a roll, but they don't really have that.
Right.
They have the titles.
They have the titles, and uh we're going through a training process. I said, we we took a a risk because we had somebody within the organization that was very um um just did a did a lot of work, was willing and able to make whatever happened, happened. And so we we took a chance, we did that, and so it's working out uh to our benefit. However, there is some training. So yes, we took that risk and it it will be working out for us, but we just need to give them some time.
She has a degree in something.
She has a degree in human resources.
So so I'm not saying that what you're what you're saying is incorrect, but when doing your budget time, you may want to reevaluate the the classification of that of that role. Because if if had I would not ask that, we would probably, we're going to think those people are accountants.
They're more of a bookkeeper than an accountant.
And so then that that, then that puts you at a level of thinking, we have one of what we really have and we really don't. So that's why I asked that question, and as you look at it further, do you consider that?
I will say that was part of my concern when we were trying to transition uh when Tia was leaving, is that I wasn't convinced that we were there. But at all fairness to them, uh, they've done a great job. But that's where it comes back, that we do need to have someone with the training because we've got to teach them. And you only get one chance to do it right, kind of like a piano teacher. I remember I took lessons. If you start learning bad habits, you continue them. And so what we really need is hands-on growth, training, development for them. But someone who has a background in accounting, training them. They've been practicing it, for example, Georgia, she's been in account, doing account function, she just doesn't have a a degree in accounting.
Does that, as I said? When you're talking about training, is it all internal or do you send them for?
Some of it's internal and some of it's external because I've already been training with what I know. And so we'll go through a lot of that extensively with me. I just, you know, having the time to get out of this audit, then I'll spend time with them. But also, there are also classes, governmental accounting classes and academies that they can go to, they can get that training, and that will help them immensely.
And do we pay for that? I'm sorry.
Yes, 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 yes.
So so just a recommendation of going back to what Mr. Harvey mentioned, uh, is that on a contract basis, not Mr. Harvey, of course, but a a contract person that could get you, get bridge you over that for a little bit, and that'll pull some relief from you, and you won't find yourself on that wheel, always trying to catch up until you get them there.
Yes.
Because you can't, so you you're almost serving two or three roles by yourself. Plus trying to train. So you may want to think about that when you're doing your.
I I have. I have, and the difficulty in this environment is that people who know governmental accounting are very rare. And so have getting somebody in without me having to train them on top of training others is difficult. So um, so, yeah, we, I, and actually did bring somebody in uh to help the staff. And that that lasted about uh two weeks. Well, well.
It was not a week.
It wasn't a week. Okay, maybe I just wanted to last.
We're we're going to keep looking. We're not going to stop looking.
We're going to keep, put it back out there. But they just didn't have the experience. People put a lot on their resume, but not necessarily all that is true. So. So.
We're going to keep looking.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And we're going to start looking as far as the position. And I I will come back to counsel uh as we start to look at, we're getting towards the end of this fiscal year, to see where we are at the end of the fiscal year so that we can recruit there. You know, it'll be a little bit easier to find someone on a permanent basis, but not completely easy. I mean, I I can give the best example yesterday of a city next to us had five people who were scheduled for an interview for a director, only two showed up to the interview. And that's for a director position. So it's not a good hire on time. People who are not coming.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Then the chair will entertain a motion to accept.
So, second.
We have a motion to accept, and we have a second to accept the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ended September thirty, twenty twenty one, including the independent auditor's report from McConnell and Jones L O P. And uh counsel, since we are in here versus out there, uh, this needs to be a voice vote. So city secretary?
Council member Veracruz, for or against? Council Mapurnet is absent. Council member Coombs, for or against? Council member Cooks, for or against? Council member Katuris, for or against? Mayor Protim Harvey, for or against? Mayor Gordon, for or against?
For, thank you. The motion has passed unanimously. Moving on to item number five, Stafford Board reports received the monthly financial report as of February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, with unassigned and spendable money being at the bottom.
I'm trying to give you what's available, okay? So I'll try to make this uh quick if you have questions. But um uh from the overall, this is February's report, uh March is you'll have in next uh council meeting. Uh, but this is when we were at forty one point six percent of the targeted budget. Uh, overall, we've collected ninety four point eight percent of the budgeted amount for property taxes. Sales taxes are are trail tracking really, really good, as well as franchise fees. Uh, general fund expenditures were thirty three percent of the budgeted amount, which is below the forty one percent target that we have this year. So um staff is staying within their budget. And uh we have, still have those use of fund balance projects that is about seventy to a hundred dollars. And ending fund balance, that's projected for fiscal year twenty two for general fund is twenty five point four million. And remember that it's going to be a moving target. So here you go, the general fund, as you can see, the down at the bottom and the beginning funding ba- fund balance for fiscal year twenty two and the actuals is fifteen point three two mi- million, and that will change once I have the audit. I will put it to the audited beginning fund balance, okay? And so that'll be a a hard and fast numbers, but as of this report, that's what it is, and that will also be in March. But as you can see, the the general fund is tracking really well. We've already got seventy, I'm sorry, sixty five point three percent of the budgeted revenues have we have collected today. Uh, we've also expenditures. I'm sorry, for Feb- for February. Basically. Um, basically, we're at seven hundred fifty six days coverage. Uh, here is the use of fund balance. Uh, we've only spent a portion of those projects uh at this point. Um, the next is the uh utility funds. Um, we're at twenty five percent uh of the budget. Uh, the total revenue, I'm sorry, overall, uh at thirty two point seven percent of budget, the target is forty one. So our revenues for the utilities are kind of trailing. Uh, we did do up cutoffs and late fees are resumed in March. We've already started doing that. So I think revenue is going to pick up um probably to the dismay of a lot of customers uh because we actually had customers haven't paid for months, maybe since October or July, but and so they're complaining, but we are collecting the funds. So um, the utility expenditures is still low, thirty two point five percent, and so they're still within that targeted amount. And the projected fund balance is at thirteen thirteen point one uh million. Uh, here is the fund, as you can see. We are planning on eating up about uh two point two million of fund balance for the budgeted amount. Um, we'll just have to see how we end the year. Uh, this is this utility C I P fund. Uh, did you say they plan to uh uh to spend to five million dollars from actually the utility operating fund is supposed to come into this fund? Uh, we've transferred five hundred thousand thus far, um and we'll be transferring more of that this year as they get to do their projects. And you can see they're planning on spending eight point one million. Uh, we're not sure we're gonna be able to spend eight million uh this year for projects, for utility projects. Um, so staff in public works is is assessing that right now to see if that is a viable option uh since this will put the fund in a hole if we continue to do so. Yes, sir.
You just said something I didn't understand or remember. You said the utility operating fund is gonna be combined with the C I P fund?
Yes, money from the utility operating fund is transferred into the utility C I P fund to fund capital improvement projects, utility projects.
Like fifty?
Going to be.
Well, it's budgeted at five million dollars. And what we do when we have transfers from one fund to the other, we kind of schedule them.
Okay.
Unless I know that they're gonna spend the money right up right fast or a time, certain time period, we usually schedule them monthly.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, this is the economic development fund. Um, this fund is doing okay. It's got about four point eight million dollar fund balance.
As of February.
As of February, February, we're in February. This is a field house. The field house, um, yes, we're about one point six million dollars in hole in fund balance. So uh when you look at your financial report, your comprehensive annual financial report, um, that this fund in that statement will not show a negative balance because we always make an entry to pull money from one fund to cover the deficit. So when you look at that fund in your financial statement, it will not reflect that because the auditors will not show a negative balance in this in the fund. They always borrow from another fund to cover that balance in their statement, and that's an adjustment we have to make if there's a negative de- deficit in a fund.
And when's when's the expiration of that debt service on line seventy seven?
It's been twenty five.
Twenty twenty five.
Twenty five.
Is it twenty five? Yeah.
Twenty twenty five.
Yes. And I think I had that, yeah, um, twenty twenty five, I had on economic development. Um, is actually before I actually knew that there was a grant that an actual agreement that says the grant, the economic development grants the field house the money to pay the debt, so. I'll flip that to the field house. That is there yet. And all other funds, I just do this so that you can see all of the funds that we have in on the general ledger. Um, from assets to hotel funds, I just put them all in one so you can see the beginning, the revenues, expenditures, and where we are to date. Uh, these are, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
But the TIF.
Yes, the TIF.
Zero thirty three.
Yes.
The E D C gave a hundred and fifty thousand dollar seed money to the TIF, and now it's down to seventy two, so they're spending money. Or they they've repaid the E D C the hundred and fifty thousand and the TIF is is pulling in money.
You said the E D C gave the TIF a hundred and fifty thousand?
It's seed money.
Oh, you mean to start out with years ago when it started?
It was to to initiate.
Now, see, this revenue is not the seed money. This revenue coming in is actually tax money. This is property tax money.
But the expenditure is not this, so we're not.
Okay, I'm looking at the increment, the the TIF fund total is now at like seventy three thousand. If they weren't spending any money, it'd be if they still have that hundred and fifty thousand seed money. So I'm assuming that if it were seventy three, they're spending money somewhere.
Well, it's caught up in the fund balance because if you look at this fund, the fund balance is like three hundred and fifty three thousand.
It looks like to me that seventy two, that seventy two thousand is just the difference between the two numbers above it.
Right.
And that's current revenue. So it's it's not the actual fund balance.
It's that one way over there.
It's the one way over there under that ending fund balance column.
So that means a hundred and fifty thousand is still there and it's still accruing.
Yes.
Money, but they haven't spent any money there.
Yes.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Whatever they're spending is minimal at this point. This is the court technology, the all court security funds, emergency relief. There's your American Rescue uh plan. We have um, we budgeted spend two point four million. Um, and we bought, we spent five hundred seventy nine thousand as of February. And this is your other debt service and capital project funds. Um, because we paid uh debt service in February, so that's where you see some of the expense is out of the debt service fund. And the rest of these, you see your capital project fund, uh, fund twenty six, which is spending money, that's where the the twenty thousand dollar, about twenty million dollars in bond money is mostly put right there.
So it mostly put in that's debt service?
Hmm.
It's usually, it's mostly put, it's mostly isn't here?
No, fund twenty six is capital projects where but bond money went into when you sold, when you sold the bonds in two thousand nineteen. Okay, so that's where most of the bond money went. It's still in this fund, and they're doing capital projects with it at this point. To date, as of February, they've spent ten point, I'm sorry, no, again, five hundred twenty seven thousand. They are budgeting to spend to ten point four million.
Got it.
Okay. And then this other funds.
And and that's always important for for you to keep sh- share with us for for us and for citizens to see what those what those dollars are being spent for bond money. So I'm glad you're sharing it. I just encourage you to keep keep sending it over and over again for us as well.
Yes. And remember, this is all on audit fund balance, and I'll be changing those as soon with the uh April report. Uh, these are enterprise funds. We have, I consider these two to be enterprise funds, the drainage and the sanitation along with your utility fund. Uh, so they're small enterprise funds, but they're still utility um enterprise funds. And they're 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 doing okay at this point. Um, they're lower than I would like them to be at this point, but the the revenue intake on these is is it's kind of small, but we are still, they're still in a positive position. Yes, sir.
So, um, we know because of inflation, the cost of the new fire station is over budget.
Yes.
We anticipated the cost of the service center is costing more than we anticipated.
Yes.
I mean, you go to Home Depot, a a piece of O S B five months ago was was like twenty four bucks, it's forty four dollars today. Lumber, steel, concrete, everything is exponentially higher. So those fund balances, what we're talking about, we've got like fifteen million here, we've got eleven million there. Is that how it's anticipated to cover these inflationary costs of these constructions that we're obviously?
Well, we're gonna have that discussion. Um, the city manager and public works director, we're looking at all of that now and determining how we're gonna go forward. And so they've actually sent me an email regarding, okay, here's our shortages. How do we make this up? So we'll be looking at that in a few.
That's a good source to, uh, we're gonna have to anticipate. So as we talk about having this amount, we know that right now, I think we started out two million over, or I think we're at about three million for the fire department. The other is another million. This starts to go away pretty quickly. And and the issue right now is Mr. Trask can probably tell you about anybody, construction is so unpredictable. People aren't even willing to guarantee prices. Uh, and so we we got a moving target, and we're gonna have some meetings to see if there's any value engineering we can do to kind of stop the bleed. But we're gonna have to move forward and complete fast because it's not, we keep hoping that it's gonna go down, but nothing's going down.
But because of this, what should I say, solvency that we see in these fund balances, should we as a council and citizens understand that we have those monies, we're gonna be able to accommodate these increases, and we're not gonna have to stop construction on these projects? And we're gonna be able to fully complete these projects because we have these surpluses somewhere to accommodate these ex- these increases of cost.
Yes, and and there are other things that we have responsibility for that uh also kick in, like our regional uh communications center. Uh, there are some uh more guidelines that we'll be bringing to you that or and to unanticipated costs that we will incur based on, you got P twenty five, now there are other regulations and things that we have to do. It's a little here, a little there, but they keep coming. And so that's why you have those funds because you never know when you have another unfunded mandate, and that's where these funds come in handy. Beyond the minimum, we have to keep that above. Uh, and and the other part I'll say into this is, yes, we've been successful in building our fund balance uh above the minimum. But we also are delaying some of the things that we've got to focus on that are not bond related, like our preventive maintenance uh in our facilities and things like that, that we're gonna continuously have to focus on. Police station, those places that are going to need some investment in it. And so that's where those funds go. And that's why each year council approves what we call our one-time expenditure funding for things that we want to do. And we generally wait till the next year to plan for what we're gonna use the last year's fund balance for. And so those and those dollars usually go toward the one-time projects. And so uh as we kick into this budget year, we've always said, this has been uncertain. We had no clue that the economy would perform the way it has. But we also are seeing numbers higher unrealistically, and the reason is we have what's unfortunately called vacancy savings because we are having a hard time filling jobs. And so if you look at our departments and you see how far they're under, they're under because they can't hire people or keep people. And that's not good because things aren't being done. And so when you see money not being spent, it's not that we didn't need it, it's just that we don't have the staff to get those things done. And so that's gonna be our big challenge this year.
So consequently, when you see all of these numbers being projected to be spent on various construction projects, it probably will not happen because the organization doesn't have the bandwidth to execute uh those projects by the end of the year.
And that's why you're seeing some of them not happen.
One, and two, uh, I'll just score on record is predicting that there will be difficult decisions to make ahead.
And that's why I'm bringing it up, because we're seeing costs escalating in a factor we never anticipated. We budgeted for it, we built it, we went out for bond money, thinking those bonds were gonna cover it, and now we're way, way short. And so that's why I wanted to bring it up publicly to put it on record and and get some degree of confidence that we're gonna be able to, you know. It's it's a terrible thing when you drive through the city and you see construction projects that are idle. There's there's pads that have been laid, thousands of cubic yards of concrete have been put down, steel has been erected, and now weeds are growing up around it because they've run out of money in order to be able to complete the project. And that's my concern is, you know, with our fire station and service centers, that we are going to be able to complete these projects. And some difficult decisions are gonna be ahead of us for that particular reason.
I do because uh, yeah, you have showed this water depo- the our water uses that we're purchasing. What did you show us? How much that we that we?
I didn't show you details, but um you're talking from Trinity River Authority in Dallas Water Utilities.
Yes.
Um, well, just from recalling, looking at um the invoices, that, you know, we pay about four point five million a year for, I I think it's Trinity and probably about the same or more for Dallas Water. And so those costs are gonna go up because uh we talked at the last meeting um with the public works director Jackie, and then they're looking at eleven percent increase. So I have to project that, I have to put that in the budget this year for uh the water utility. So that is one of the things that we talked about with the uh the consultant who's doing our water rate study uh to see where this fund is gonna land if we don't do something um uh to fix it. And so we had to consider all of that, and all the cities are having the same issue is that it's a steady increase every year from Dallas Water until then to in Trinity. And um we just pray each year that they don't go up too much, that we can afford it. But this city has not raised rates in quite a while. And so we're looking at that, how is that affected the fund? It's kind of suffering at this point, but we'll, we we need to see what we can do in order to stop the bleed.
You may recall in the state of the city address, I mentioned that we haven't raised water rates in four years, and we're going to have to. It was preemptory, it was made in the state of the city. I put that out there so everybody would understand. We can't continue to to subsidize our water anymore because it's going in the red. So this this fiscal year or something has to happen with water.
And mayor, the water bill is not just the water we buy, it's the capital project. I know if you remember, we have a project that we were supposed to be adding to of our our main pumping water stations. We don't have enough money because the cost came in so far over to duplicate one, but we still know we have the other. So that's the other thing that we have to consider is that everything is costing more, and we are just having to make tough decisions to get things done.
All right, thank you.
Um, ma'am, during city council members, during city council meetings, uh comments from the citizens are not accepted. Okay, afterwards, if you want to address something, you may. So uh seeing all of our business has been concluded, I will adjourn our city council meeting at eight o'clock, nothing else. Thank you very much.